The, moving forward, we won't actually do a contract, I believe, until later in the summer after. They just need to know we're committed.
The contract, their deadline before they can do anything is August, it has to be agreed upon August, middle of August. So, yeah, so we would have to do resolution probably this meeting that we're in, finalize some documents, this, there, the other, and then it would be June or July, we'd have, I'd have an ordinance, I assume.
I think we ought to proceed with it, but I think we ought to be careful about what we, what we ask them to plan for, so that we don't have them plan for things that we can't possibly actually do.
And it, it's kinda like we, we talked about before, it is really a comprehensive roadmap plan for the downtown area from City Hall to City Hall. Where do we get the funds and how do we implement what the plan actually says is a totally different story.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a, that's a real viable concern, as Tony mentioned, and as we've talked about before.
For half a million dollars.
Well, we're, our, our thirty, uh, thirty thousand dollars, and let's put on, put on our show.
But I, and, and kinda my tone Kenny, I think if we have that document, we can get some buy-in, um, then you can go to some of these business owners or property owners and say, hey, look, look, look what we could have. Um, and there's other options, you know, we could explore, there's a lot more than I can do myself, you know, you have historic building credits, all that kinda stuff. Um, you, you know, Perryville's did something really unique, they passed, I have to get more details on Greg's familiar with it, but they passed a tax, uh, where a portion of that goes back to property owners, so they will, Perryville took some of it, invested in their, um, county seat, which if you've ever been to Perryville, Mary Janes, in that square there, portion of that funding went to restore that old historic building, which is the center of the square, and then they share it, uh, I don't know if it's an application process or whatever, but the other property owners can tap into that funds and paint their building, put on and improve the neighborhood. So there's, there's all kinds of different things to be done that will take somebody other than me kinda just, you know, doing it. But there, there's ways, but it's, you know, I think if you have a plan and you went to one of the property owners and said, hey, look what we could drew, draw here, you know, here's, here's what it is, it's buy-in and it's, it's getting people not to just attend one meeting and get bored with it and throw up their hands, 'cause we've all been in, on committees and groups where you have a lot of buy-in at the first meeting, and then nobody shows up at half of the second, and nobody at the third.
Maybe something that'd be good to do is to identify a few people in the community that would be willing to participate in that planning process.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know yet how they're going to determine who's involved, but I had some questions written down.
Include some of the, uh, business, business owners, because one thing I saw over and over and over again in that book that he passed around was, he showed a, a real picture of the street, like, you know, of where it was then, then he showed the, the artist drawings with the knockout, yeah, with the trees, and diagonal parking was gone, and it's all, you know, tray parking, like, like it was over here on One Time Street. You're gonna leave the parking, I, I think on, on every picture I saw, it had all of that. Diagonal parking, like, business owners may not like that.
Right, right.
And I'm not saying go.
Right, and, and I don't know, um...
I think that's gonna be a much bigger concern in Festus where their, their, uh, uh, right away, their right of way is narrower than ours, generally.
But they don't have any diagonal parking.
Well, no, but they don't have enough room for the parking they have.
They will take them, uh...
Bump outs.
Yeah, bump outs out, and they will make their sidewalks ADA compliance.
Well, they might, but we, I'm, what I'm telling you is they have streets like this out here. Okay, and their artist drawing put the bump outs in there and limited the parking. So they, they had to bump out, and their plan, that's what's needed.
Well, maybe they'll be like Festus, after they get them in there, they made out one.
They took it out one, that's why.
Well, and they, and, and Festus has had the same problems, they've tried to do, to figure out their parking in front, and their stormwater issues, and residents like, don't take the parking spots, we need people that is our front door, and Festus is like, that whole back south, behind South Adams, and that's all, well, behind Main Street on both sides is all Festus own parking. So, so there, there's issues like that, for sure, in, in both communities, so...
But I think it'd be a good, like Jack was saying, I think it'd be a good marketing plan for us.
Uh, that's what I'm excited about the most, how to differentiate the two cities.
You know, maybe they'll open the door, like Rick said, that it might open the door for the property owner in Pittsburgh, it might help us out in a court case that, hey, you know, we're, we're trying, I, I don't know.
If we showed buy-ins and strategies according to East West case law, that, that's gonna have some credibility, I think, with the judge, so I, I really thought we'd be showing that EPG property that, whether we have a detailed plan or whether we just have some direction to show that we've taken some positive initiatives.
Right, I mean, my understanding is these will be the best of the best, these aren't just hornin', chippin', out of St. Louis, these are gonna be people from all over the country, whoever gets these contracts, that is the best of the best, is, is the way I understand it. Not, not the hornin', chippin' by any means, I'm just saying they're, 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 we're going outside our typical scope of who bids on our projects, is what I'm saying.
If, if nothing else, I think Festus is gonna go ahead and do it with or without us.
I believe so.
So, we might as well be included in the plans.
Exactly, basically get our fair share, I mean, so can you get quite a bit, I mean, for thirty thousand out of a hundred, I mean, how much have you been, for the...
It's a little more equitable fair share on us, we, we looked at City Hall to City Hall, linear fee, mileage, everything, and, you know, we have a lot of residential between our actual downtown area that could be used, so the, the best way to probably figure it up is by population, and I'll give Matt and Ryan the credit for that, he kinda figured that out. So, you know, and, and so I'll bring that resolution back, as long as Festus is still okay with the numbers, um, on, on the split, and we'll pass a resolution Monday, and we'll go from there and see where that takes us. So, that takes us to number two, the American Rescue Plan, corner, corner virus fiscal recovery funds. One thing that they did suggest in a couple webinars I've watched is collaborative projects, like we were just talking about, uh, they like to see that kinda stuff when you're working with, with the, this money in your neighboring city. So, with that being said, what I gave you is a handout, is just kind of a, uh, round tabling with the department heads, the, um, Barb, the, uh, finance director, myself. If we had a long-term plan, which we probably should have put in place ten years ago when I started in this position, this is what some of the things you're looking at, some of, especially the street sweeper, uh, the backhoes, the, um, the, uh, trash truck, those are large capital expenditures that, that have reached their lifetime, uh, end of their life, basically. Like I told Tony today, could we take that street sweeper we have, it's been well-maintained, it's been taken care of, and, and going down the road another four or five years, yeah, probably so, uh, but they're not getting any cheaper, as you can see, uh, in ten years, they've almost doubled in price, so if we wait another five or ten years, we're probably gonna double in price again, and I don't know when we'll have this large sum of cash to, to make those large capital expenditures that last. Um, that one was bought in two thousand and ten.
So, I sent Jason some thoughts on this, this morning, when I read through it, and, um, I guess I've been around long enough now that it's, it's starting to get to the point where things that seem like we just did them, we bought that ten years ago. So it, in my head, we just bought that street sweeper, and we just bought the water department a new backhoe, but really, both of those things happened quite a while ago.
We just have one street, we only have one street sweeper?
We do, yeah, they brought one down today as a, uh, as a, um, demo model.
Oh, that was... I have that for a week, but...
They took it back, I drove it, and then they decided they were taking it back. So they brought it down, they're just kinda, they have three available, I told them, I'm just taking this to the council tonight, I won't have any decision, I don't know when I'm even, we're even gonna get this money. Um, this, our cities under fifty thousand will be passed through, through the state, state will get it to us, it'll be in two portions, half this year and half no, sooner than a year from now. Um, it's still a little, so they just released a hundred and fifty-one pages of treasury guidelines on this money, my entire list served is angry because it's not still real clear, everybody's still kinda figuring out what you can do, what you can't do. It's been pretty clear, if you can write a narrative that you're purchasing, whatever you're purchasing because of loss in revenue, which I can do, uh, very easily, um, then it should be clear. The state now is, is kicking around ideas that they need to micromanage this money and create some sort of portal that we have to report to, which, again, is no big deal, but it's a little bit unfair to the communities over fifty thousand who are getting their money directly from the federal government. Uh, so here again, it's the, the state sticking their nose in small municipalities' business, so I don't know where that's going. I'm not saying we have to spend all this this year, next year, we have four years to spend it, we cannot invest it, we cannot buy CDs, it has to be spent, so...
Anyway, I, I made a few other nitpicky, uh, criticisms of his ideas for how to spend money, and I think he addressed all my concerns, the only one I still would have a little bit of issue with is, uh, buying a car just for the fire department to, to go for training and stuff, like, it's gonna sit there most of the time and not run. That's a lot of money to spend on a car that basically sits there most of the time.
Yeah, they have two, two pickup trucks right now, and each of them over a hundred thousand miles. Basically, what I asked each department head was, what, if, if you can have some of this money, what is one thing you need? Do you need jaws of life, do you need this, that, or the other? Uh, mostly they take those vehicles in the middle of the night without running code, they'll grab one of these pickup trucks in here and go there, and they'll take four or five of them to train in Columbia, so it's a non-emergency type vehicle. They pull the boat with it on occasion, stuff like that, so that's what Tony asked for, um, he didn't ask, he didn't...
My only concern is when these things get aged on them and start to break down, how are we gonna replace them? I know we're getting what they earned, some thousand dollars to buy all this, we, we're not gonna get that, you know, seven, eight, nine, ten years.
No, we won't have, we're not turning again.
So, if it goes, once it's gone, I'm talking about the vehicle, the trucks that we bought from, you know, everybody's got their own truck, the street park, and now, you know, we're getting new vehicles from fire parks, so in ten years, or eight years, seven years, trucks are gone, are we gonna try to keep that one?
I don't know, that's a good question, you seen our fleet before, we had this, this pile of money, and kinda what they were driving and what they were dealt with, which I think everybody's seen that, you know, we, we took what we had and, and drove it into the ground, you know, a lot of those vehicles, trucks that we had, and then we hadn't gotten rid of any of them, we've, each, each person kinda has their own vehicle, which I alluded to, to Tony today, which it's really been around most of, for those, for a lot of these guys that have been here a long time, hard to believe now, but just about everybody, been here over ten or almost fifteen years. They're all assigned those vehicles, so when I go down there and it's full of mud, or the mayor shows up and it's full of mud, or any one of you guys, um, they take a little more pride now that they're each, um, have their, assigned their own vehicles. They're cleaning them on, on pretty routinely, now I told them I don't expect them to look showroom new, but there's a lot of downtime on a rainy day like today, pull it in shop, clean it up, wash it, vacuum it out, so I don't have an answer for that, I just... And, and it, it, it potentially could in, in ten years, but, you know, I think we were, we were at that point, and we're fortunate to be able to use the, or whatever, to, to get some good stuff.
I'm not saying don't spend that money, don't get the stuff, I'm just saying, get them a truck, say, look, this is a one-time shot, right.
Jason, you started out by saying that we really should have had a capital improvement plan years ago, maybe what we need to do is just identify all of our assets, figure out what their useful lifespan is, and then look at it once a year and say, would we need to replace this if something happened to it, yes, no, and then...
And that goes back to the same, like, the plan, do we, do we have money?
But that way we know from one year to the next, like, you know, all of these trucks are gonna age out next year, what are we gonna do?
Been working on a spreadsheet for parts for depreciation purposes, of all the new vehicles, the old vehicles, the equipment, so we can, we can gather that pretty quick, you know, and sense.
I guess you guys don't follow the normal, like, tax depreciation rules, but like, tax depreciation does not match real-world depreciation.
No, she...
Like, you buy a computer and it's shot in three years, you buy a vehicle and it might last seven to ten years if you take care of it.
She depreciates things based on age, I believe, or assets as we buy them, I'm not, I'm not sure. But, um, I just kinda, you know, if there's something on here that we don't need, of course, you know, the, the, Chad hit me up today for three or four more things that we'll have to talk about at some point. I'm not, I'm not asking him to buy any of this stuff next week, this is just kinda the list that we've all put together.
I have one question about Chad on his, uh, new phone, I guess they gotta have it, my question is, where do they add on body cams?
So, this is... It's been a while since we've talked about that.
I thought the last time we looked at that, we decided we were gonna kinda wait and see how Missouri's case law developed around that, to see if it was gonna be a, a benefit or a harm to have constant recording of everything your law enforcement people do.
Right, and that's kinda where we left it, um, body cams is something he hasn't brought up. Body cams gets, you know, it's kinda like car cameras, it gets real expensive real fast, just 'cause you've bought twenty cameras, now you gotta increase your server size, your server and your capacity size, stuff we deal with every day because of their in-car cameras. So he hasn't brought that back up at the time, you, you guys are right, that they wanted to see kinda how it, how it went, took off. Every one of our cameras, our cars, has a camera in the car, so he hasn't brought that back up to me.
Well, let's maybe get a, updated, the state of the art on...
Body cam issues, I have not, but he will be here tomorrow for... I think they do, I, I, I think, I, I think they do, I know we, we had talked about it, and it just was never...
I'm just thinking from a liability standpoint, if you might wanna check with Brandon and find out, expense aside, how important is it from that aspect?
You might also ask your liability insurance carrier, how they feel about it.
Seems like everything you're seeing on the news these days, body cams, they have tasers, this, that.
And that's something too, like I said, that, you know, I just wanted to see if there's anything on here that you guys... The, the two biggest things to me are, are the street sweeper and the trash truck.
And the what?
The trash truck, that, that thing is used daily, obviously you're stuffing trash in, and it's, so it's not, you know, it, they just don't... I mean, it's, it's not real old, doesn't have a whole lot of miles, but it's got a lot of hours and a lot of use on it. Uh, that's, that's coming next year, regardless if we use this money for it, or we have to take it out of the fifty fund or, or reserves or something, but a new trash truck is, uh, where the maintenance on them is getting to be a nightmare. They're, we can do the little things, the mechanic can do the little things, but you have those cylinders inside that compactor that we don't have the equipment, the knowledge, and we, it's just unsafe. You can take it up to Armor, one of those companies that put in there, and take it apart in a half a day, which takes us a week and three other employees to take a cylinder the size of a, you know, have to die out here, so... They're just gonna be kinda expensive, but that, that has to happen soon, so, and the street sweepers. Yeah, both of them are. I would, I don't know, I didn't get into that, and I just kinda asked everybody what they're thinking they're needed, um... Oh, trash trucks? Uh, yeah, so on the trash trucks, there would be, there's programs, if you trade them in, they can cut them in half or cut the emissions out of them, or just basically render it useless, then, that's basically a grant. So it's just like the, the, so we have three trash trucks and the smaller recycled truck that we just took out, didn't take out of service, but it's a backup recycle truck. So part of the grant process on a new truck, when we got that recycle truck, the guy said, if you'll trade in one or two, the more you trade in, and we can get rid of that old emission type stuff, you get, you know, cheaper the truck will be. So we'll, they wanna keep two at all times, because we had some, we had run two bulk trucks, after holidays, we run trucks, uh, you know, two trucks on a day, so we'll always have, right, right, so they'll have, they'll always have at least two to three trucks, whether they, you know, 'cause my thinking was to keep the small recycle truck, send out to pick up, you know, extra bulk yard waste, but they don't think it's big enough, so we'll see what they wanna do with it. As far as the explorer and the fire departments, I don't, I didn't, we didn't get that far, what, what they'll do, what they're, so... We'll work through that, and when I know more, I'll have more, you know, we'll have to talk about this more at some point. Um, RV and boat parking, so we've, we've been handling that on a case-by-case basis. I meant to get out today and take some pictures of what I think is okay and not okay. Um, uh, there's, there's, for the most part, we, we don't get too many complaints, there's three to four a year, sometimes more. Some people try to do a nice job, some people don't realize you can't park it in your driveway, some people don't realize you can't park it in, on the, in your grass, on the side of the house. Some people take lots and just shove it full of everything. So, so there's issues, um, and, and when this first popped up, I was like, alright, let's go hit them all, let's go... They're all getting a letter, they're all getting an ordinance, and then I didn't think you guys would like that, because I would imagine there'd be about two hundred people sitting in this room right now. So we decided to handle it on, 'cause no, you don't really think about it, you know, when you buy an RV, you don't read the codes of the city, you pull it home, you're all proud, you wanna go camping or fishing or whatever, um, and we don't really wanna be a hindrance to you, but it, it's also, it's what the ordinance says. As you can see, most of the ordinances are pretty close to ours, nobody really reinvented the wheel. I don't know what you guys wanna do, because there is some that are illegally parked, although they did make an attempt, poured a pad, done the whole thing, but it's not behind the house, uh, and then again, there's some that just pull up a job trailer and a gooseneck and whatever else, right on, right on the grass.
Like, like, I'm thirty-two, a couple blocks from my house, and my next door, it's been there for eight months, and you can sit in, in the front yard, that's where it stays, so, took out the mowers on that, pretty busy, you can sit up there, it was, it was a lot, 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 about eight months.
Right.
But then you go right down the road to, to have them open, that's a pad, shrubs, trim, flowers.
It's not, I, it's awesome, I always ride next to that, I said my cool, I don't have an issue with that at all.
But it's, but it's against, it's against the ordinance, it's against the ordinance.
I know.
That's, that was an example when I told him that.
That's why I'm saying, I'm with you, case by case.
I think it's a case by, I mean, I don't know if I, I don't know what I did, but I think it's case by case, that's two different things, you know, it doesn't affect me at all, I don't have a, I don't have a different, uh, it's, 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 yeah.
I mean, it was the boat on the.
Yeah, right there, he can take care of it. Now he did take it and move it. And then a couple days later, the, the Jim told me that he's got some work to do, so he's gonna put it up on his. That's where we all park, in the back of the garage, or off the alley. The guy next door, he's trying, he's like, it's a great yard. Last week, he had a pool.
So. Mm-mm. No, Chad, Chad went over, Chad went over all that with me today, and I don't remember exactly what he said. He asked if he wanted me to be here tonight, and I didn't wanna keep him around for, for half, but. Right, and you can't just move it six inches and then re-park it, that doesn't, that doesn't. That's your, that's your determination, that's not what the chief told me today, but I'm.
I don't think we should let people park boats and trailers on the street. If it's on a driveway, or a gravel, a gravel pad, and it looks halfway decent, even it's in front of the house, I think that's fine. If they're gonna park it on the grass, I think it needs to be behind the house. You know, or, or something, because it looks trashy to have it out in the front yard.
There's, on Mississippi, there's this massive gooseneck trailer, but he tucked it in between the house.
Yeah, right.
And it's on the driveway.
I don't have an issue with that at all.
I don't have an issue with that. And a couple weeks ago, he had, he had it out on the street, and my wife, he's there, well, what do we do? I said, well, he's probably loading up, you wanna take off and go camping, but you know, sometimes it takes a day or two to do that.
He backed that in one time, just throw that out there.
Yeah, I said, I mean, I, I seen him do it the other day, I was taking my walk, I watched him.
There's a.
He had his wife out there, they were going.
There's a, there's a homeowner at, uh, Eleventh and Virginia, that has some, uh, masonry pillars out in front of their house, that, uh, has tried to back a trailer in a few times, and that, those masonry pillars are off their foundation.
Is that why the lights broke?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome, huh?
That's my dad.
So we'll just, we'll just continue to monitor on a case by case basis, there's no need to reinvent the wheel.
I think that.
I don't.
Some of the, some of the worst ones that, that I've talked to Rick and Matt about, they're gonna start hitting, and if we get a complaint. Because what happens inevitably, is I go, they're gonna come back with six more, what about these?
I don't think it's a good idea to just say we're doing it on a case by case basis, we need to figure out what our rules are, and then enforce our rules. Because if you, if you try to enforce a rule, but if you just say case by case, and we, either it's done on a complaint basis, or it's something that somebody decides that they just don't like, you're gonna have them go around, find examples of other people that are doing it, and then we won't be able to enforce any rules at all.
That's gonna happen regardless.
Well, I absolutely, uh, that close, uh, probably coming down, you know, visiting inside here. One of our officers, he didn't know me, my boat was parked on the street, probably a couple days longer than she would have been.
Mm-hmm.
Knocked on my door, said, you either move it or I write you a ticket. And I said, well, I tell you what, you write me a ticket, when you go down the street and write that fellow down there a ticket, and I'll accept it.
That's right.
And he said, who you talking about, you know who I'm talking about down on the corner, he said, oh, no, we don't, we don't deal with that, but I talk cheap.
Yeah.
When he goes down there, he's gonna like see that.
That's right.
That's.
Cause the guy, the other guy, before you get Boyers, the other guy, the other guy, no, he's got, he's parked up right alongside now.
Yeah, he's in the back, same thing. He's got a new boat in the back, yeah, yeah.
Off the alley, you know, alongside the garage, yeah.
Yeah.
But, like in, 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 in the case of, of Glenn Boyers.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, I wouldn't want that boat sitting on the street.
No, that's a nice boat.
Somebody hits that, and people say, wow, that's what they pay insurance on, no.
But it does sit on there all year, you know, he, he's using it right now.
No.
He's using it right now, and the season when he's done, he puts it, puts it away, doesn't sit there all night.
It's sitting there all summer.
Sits there all summer, yeah.
We beat that dead horse. Well, no, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't come to any conclusion at all.
You wanna.
I think it says, uh.
See, that's what you already said, a lot of people can't put it behind their house.
Right, I think besides that, if we need to rewrite it, I've seen where you, I drove around town, and you see everything, I rode my bike after, is what I did. And it's, it's, there's different cases, but nobody wants to see like, a blue tar trap in the front yard in the grass.
No.
That needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
But my neighbor has that, uh, my neighbor's the bottom of the hill, they have, they built a, um, oh. The Ruth's grandpa, uh, he built it on the side of the house.
Lucas, oh.
Yeah, Luke, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lloyd.
That's Lloyd.
Yeah, with his RV, he built a, a spot, it's been there since I moved there, I mean, and that technically is on the side of the hill.
Yeah, that's nice.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, who's gonna go issue his, his morning?
You, you.
No. Well, I guess I probably have to with Mr. Lucas, who said that there, that was a, probably a pretty expensive camper parking spot.
Yeah, well, that whole wall, all that still.
That one behind, behind our actual.
Yeah, yeah, Lloyd.
That's mine too.
Did they build that or did you build it?
No, Lloyd built that, yeah. But, uh, I don't know, I, I don't have a problem with a case by case, uh, on the other hand, I, I see where Tony's coming from, but, you, you know, it is the fishing season, people's got boats on the street, and I, I know our R D three's, you, you can move it, as long as you move it, get in and move it, and that doesn't mean you pull it up six inches. But I, I know for a fact, because, uh, not Chad, but Bruce, has gone up and talked to Boyer years ago, with that other big boat he had up there. And, you know, Glenn come by the house, he rolled the window down, he said, hey, I'm moving my boat, then I'm gonna go back and park it again. Cause that's what the ordinance says, you know? And it's fishing season, at the end of the year, these guys, Jim puts his up on the hill, and behind his house, Glenn takes his up there in a cave or something, I think, up there, and stores it for the winter. As long as it's, got a license on it, you know, and it's not like a derelict vehicle sitting out there, you know, I don't know. Case by case based, up there on Virginia, when we got the complaint from an individual, you know, that was a case by case. Went up there, somebody went up there and talked to him.
We sent them letters.
Uh?
We sent them letters with the, uh.
Okay, because she came to me and said, you let Jason know, I really appreciate him taking care of it, I said, yeah, we did. I said, I was in the room whenever he was talking to you, and, uh, he said, she said, well, I appreciate it. Now, I didn't hear nothing from, from them people or anything, or, have you heard any rebuttal?
I think, no. No, uh, Rick told me this morning during staff meeting that, um, I think it was one thirteen, eleven thirteen maybe called, had a message. The other ones, I believe, moved it, brought it back on Thursday night, probably packed it up, sort of go this weekend, hasn't been an issue, so.
Yeah. And really, that one there didn't bother me neither, cause it's on, it's in their driveway, in between the house, and it's not, it's a good looking rig, and it's not out on the street, you know, it's.
I, I think that, that, you know, everybody's kinda got a similar view of what we need to do, with, with the exception, I agree with Tony, I think that if we wanna enforce it, we have to have an ordinance. I mean, if we do it case by case, which it makes sense, but then we don't have any team to enforce anything if we do it case by case,
Yeah.
without doing exactly what we're talking about, you know, what, what about this guy, what about that guy? Why don't you do, uh, look into, uh, understanding what, how we all feel about it, why don't you look into.
Yes and no. Because the, the boat on the street may make sense where an individual lives on Jefferson Avenue, but it doesn't make sense if an individual has a boat behind, as you're going to the pond at the park. So, in some areas, leaving it on the street and that being okay during fishing season or camping season makes sense, cause there's room. But then think of another street where we can barely get a fire truck, and because we changed the ordinance to say you can leave the boat on the street during fishing season, now you got six boats on the street and you're playing Tetris, really. I mean, there's, there's no good fix of this, we either enforce the ordinance, I think, or, or. No, I got, I kinda got everybody's thoughts, so let me, let me get with Rick and Matt and the chief, and, and see kinda what, what they think. I know the chief doesn't wanna change anything, cause he, you don't want the town to start, you know, next thing you know, storage businesses kaput, cause they're all on the streets and the front yards and stuff here, you know? So we don't wanna go down that route, so let me, let, let, you know, this is being work in progress, we might not get anything accomplished. I, I think the letter that Rick sent out gave him ten days or fourteen days to, 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 to find some, a different storage. Or to move it, yeah, I mean, and. Yeah, and. Right, and, and. Yeah, and, and we're more about compliance than we are citations, I mean, we get, you know, uh, we. Yeah, alright, so we'll, we'll, we'll continue dealing with it that way, and we'll. Well, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, let me work on a little bit, and we'll see if we can't come up with something. Now onto a bigger problem. Our roads. This, um, preventative maintenance plan we did, doesn't seem like it again, but it was four years ago, um, which I've asked, um, Cochran to give me an updated plan, or cost on an updated plan where we're at today's date, he said you have it sometime this week, but basically rounding these numbers up at the bottom to do the entire city, which I thought, I heard, uh, Mr. Osher say his street wasn't even on here, but. Okay, um, you know, you're over five million dollars over, at one point was ten years. Uh, we're probably double that now, we're close to double that, cost of asphalt and crude oil. I don't, I don't know, you know, we, we get three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in road tax money, which is our only road tax money. Our only money that we have available to do streets. We've done a pretty good job with them, we've all been here long enough that we knew that this day was gonna come, when we're caught up with our FDP grants, that our deteriorating side streets have went, have done just that, deteriorated beyond just to shovel full patch. And this last February didn't help at all, it, it kinda enhanced things, so I don't have a good plan. The only thing that, that I know to do is we're going to have to start, either it is kinda what it is, and we do what we can do, or we need to start, one thing I had was consider a use tax again, and devote that money to the roads, which by the estimates, if you read any of, of the stuff I gave you in your packet, would pretty much close to double our road budget. And then we'd make a little, I think we could get some progress that route. Uh, regardless, I think we should consider a use tax again, just based on, um, the difference, what's that been, five years now, probably? Four, maybe since we ran it, three or four. Um. People's shopping has changed, the, the way they do things have changed dramatically from last year, this time last year, to now. Um, the difference some of these other towns are seeing. The legislation just make, did make it a lot easier for this to pass, I don't know the exact details of Senate bill or House bill, whichever one it is, but they've cleaned it up a lot to make it easier. We're, we're one of a handful in the state that don't have it in it, still hasn't got it passed, Fessis included, and probably dozens more out of two hundred and sixty cities, or whatever there is. So, I think what a lot of people have done that got this passed, have, you know, we did it to level the playing field with the smaller mom and pop shops, which is really what its intent was, but I think if we target it to be used on roads and sidewalks, or specific to that, and can show people what we're gonna do with this money, and this updated plan, and so on and so forth, we may have a better. And do it ourselves, although Fessis sees the same things I sent out on my list there, Greg's member two, so he already's got the idea in his head to do the same thing, but I think they're gonna dedicate theirs towards parks, and maybe more firemen, I'm not sure. But, I don't, I don't know a way to get, to get these roads in the shape that we need to get them, uh, with the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Yeah, we would have to, we would work through it the rest of this year and figure out what to do. I need to dive into what the legislation just passed on, on, which will be signed in, in August, but, um, yeah, we would have to do a more, we'd have to put it on the ballot in, um, April, we would have to, if we wanna do it right, we would do it solely, probably by ourselves, um, and have to hit the pavement like we did for the, for the emergency services tax, I mean, that's. So it's, it's probably something we should consider regardless, um. Yeah, we passed the vehicle use tax, which was, was good, but we failed on the record border. Yeah, a year or two before that, around the same time, it doesn't, time flies, so maybe so. So, based on, if you go to, towards the end of your packet, I kinda got a list of the last two or three pages, I think. So there's communities there that I, you know, bounced back on our list serve, and, and just, let's just use the top one, Independence, which is a hundred and something thousand people. Um, they were predicting one point five million annually, and this year is projected to bring in four point eight million. So, using last year's numbers is, is kind of an anomaly, because, you know, everything was, everybody reverted to online shopping.
Right.
Now, is that gonna stay the trend? Probably more than not, uh, but, um, you know, you can go down, you can read on Ralla, Sykeston, all of them are seeing exponentially bigger numbers than they thought. There's no real good way to track this, there's just, you know, if you have manufacturing in your town, you buy stuff from overseas, that counts. You know, all, all kinds of different variables go into what's in your communities, but based on what, what I got back from M M L, is they, they are expecting revenue just to bring in additional three hundred and three thousand dollars, uh, for us, which would basically double our road budget now. That's some of the numbers they predicted for these other communities, you can see what actually happened. The M M L per, put this out on spreadsheet. So in Sykeston, they were estimated four hundred thousand, and last year they collected nearly a million. So it's, it's just, the vari, there's so many variables that go into this, collection. Yeah. And, and I think there's a lot more awareness now, unfortunately because of the last year, but there's also a lot more awareness now of Amazon being around, and what actually Amazon is. And you're not only targeting is Amazon, that's probably your biggest target, but there's a lot more awareness than there was three years ago, four years ago, when we ran this, about online shopping, so nothing that has to be decided tonight, but it's something that everybody needs to really think about, because, you know, we're only meeting once a month, and, and pretty soon it'll be fall, and we'll need to nail down this, this. So the gasoline tax was passed in the House, two and a half cents over five years. Uh, there, it will not be in the Senate, it will not be before the voters, it's just automatically, I don't know a whole lot about that either, but it automatically goes into place. Um, two and a half cents over five years, based on our fuel tax, trying to back out of that a little bit. It will be an additional pool of money, which we can dump towards roads, or make sure we, we take it towards roads, but I don't have a good calculation on what that'll be yet, but our, our actual fuel collections are about a hundred and seventy five thousand a year, so it's not gonna be, if you, if you kinda back out of the math there, it's not gonna be a huge, you know, we have two gas stations in town, so it's not gonna be a huge. Well. You, uh, do y'all get the M M L email, some of you? Well, I, I do, cause that's what y'all pay me to do, but I can't sit here and explain to you. It's, they, there, there's been a lot of discussion, there was a filibuster, Becky Ruth, um, worked hard on getting this done. Um, and it's, it's, you have, you have to read, I don't wanna sit here and tell you something that's not right, but it's, it's, it passed the, some people believe it passed the Hancock sniff test, and so on and so forth, of course, there's arguments on either side that you couldn't do this, you can't do that, but it passed. And it's scheduled to go into effect, so I don't know the numbers, I asked Becky when she, when she called me on, I was at the radio station Wednesday morning, when she called, and, and told me the night before that it passed, asked her if she could give me the numbers that she thought it would bring in for us. I don't, she, she didn't yet, she had to go back to the state and start to do, they'll probably back out and give us a number like they did for the use tax, what they think it means for everybody. It will be a additional money, but I, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be use tax money, no, no. But it, you know, we could, we could do some stuff with it, for sure. Um, we just, we, most cities, the code you before have separate road taxes besides the county. Not everybody has a garbage tax, actually, I don't know anybody that has a garbage tax, so maybe at some point, we've been here long enough, maybe we did that route instead of a, our own individual T tax or road tax, I don't know. But three fifty isn't getting us very far anymore. But, three fifty isn't getting us very far anymore. No, I think we have plenty of room, we have at least a half cent, I believe, to go before we're kept out. Cause even though our tax is nine point one, yeah, we only get two point two five percent of that. I think most of them are set up to, I don't wanna answer that, cause I'm not sure. I know, that, so park goes to parks, park goes to trash, yeah, right. So I don't, I don't know, I'll have to get back with you on that one. That was answered, that was answered in one of these emails. Right, right. Right, so that, so I think you could run it all as a general revenue sales tax under your total tax thing. I, I wanna say that, but I, I don't wanna tell you I'm wrong. Yeah, that's kinda, yeah, I mean, it's, it's roads and sidewalks is what I intended, and that's what I said up there. So, yeah, road sidewalk repairs, cause there's, there's a lot of sidewalks that need fixed too. There was a- Yeah, there was a sidewalk list here forever, and it just kinda now, yeah, it kinda just, there's no official program. It was get your name on the list and the citizens will pay for the concrete and we do the work and then that kinda went away. That hasn't been in- I mean, that, you know, the thing about it is too, is if this materialized and bring in enough money, we could do a lot, we can hire concrete crews, one or two or three people using this money and get a lot of this done ourselves a lot cheaper. We don't have the manpower to do that now, we got guys that have the knowledge. They don't have the manpower or the money to take three guys and take them off, you know, and one cemetery cleaning it up today. You know, one doing just there, there, two on the trash, so. So there's, there's a lot we can do once we know how much money that's bringing in, but, so, okay, well, we'll talk about that, but we could, but if it's, I mean, I wouldn't sunset a use tax. Not for sure, because that's, that's kinda the wave of the future where this, all, all this online stuff is, now. Right, right. And I think what, I think Independence talks about how once they fulfill that commitment, then it just waterfall into the different funds for different use, but, you know, by the time you get done with the ten year road plan, it's time to start back over on that, on road, on one, you know, so. Uh, I, yeah, I agree, so. Uh, the other thing I had was, uh, basically airport road overlay assisted living facility. Um, Councilor Picarello, the mayor, Dan Turner and Rick Cox met with the, uh, Fessus Special Road District on Wednesday last week, and, somewhere in the next page. There is a estimate on the road overlay for a two inch, two inch overlay. Um, the only thing I wanted to point out was the possibility of a new assisted living facility out there. It's kinda in the very infancy stages, we had the same kind of people inquire last year. Uh, and for whatever reason, they backed out. I think there's been enough traction and, and interest that there may be something there someday. I'm not sure if it'd be before we would do this project, um, or not. Rick has talked about, uh, one of the conditions being them fix the road out there, uh, on top of, along with their project. So I don't know, I know Dave's, uh, wanting to, to get this done this year. I'm just kinda throwing it out, if we give him a little time to see what they're gonna materialize and do this project, or can we-
But what was brought up there in the meeting, should we not tell them, wherever, if they do come in? Cause this has been going on for what, two years now?
Well, we had one last year, and this is a totally different company this year, so. No, they're just inquiring. Before construction, yeah, probably, I think they're doing their, their feasibility studies, they're, they've inquired about, uh, water flow testing and sewage and all that kinda stuff, so. Yeah, two things. The bids come in on this project next Tuesday, so I can nangle some money and try to make it all work. Use a little bit of stormwater on this, cause there are stormwater improvements, but if this comes in shooting its way out of the water, then we're going Second Street to Sixth Street is our project this year, all those side streets. Um, so that's, that's our bid now, that comes in Tuesday, we have a bid opening on Tuesday. Is that on there? Yeah, that's, no, that's, um, my gosh, that was talked about during budget, yeah, during budget, so. But I gotta see, you know, with the price of oil right now, I gotta see what this is gonna come in, to even make sure I can do this. If, if I can, then maybe we just take these projects next year, because industrial, I'm getting beat up on Industrial Drive too, by the hospital, by, um, for their tools out there. Yeah, maybe, maybe we do the, those two streets as our project next year. I'm not saying I can't do this this year, but I need to see what this is gonna come in at, um, and, and kinda go from there. And that, that, you know, hopefully if we, you know, if the money's there and we don't know anything by fall, then we, we can go ahead and do this or whatever. I'd like to give them guys a little bit of time to, to see, and then really it all depends on what this comes back at. I mean, if this comes out, good deal. January, uh, and I think they gave us one towards the end of the year. So I think they gave us one last year, this year's in kind, and we get another one next year, so. And I think it's thirty-seven thousand for this year, so we're, we can even figure something out that way too. I don't, I'm not opposed to none of this, I just gotta make sure all these projects, three hundred and fifty grand doesn't take us far, but we have about, I wanna say four fifty in there right now, um, but I gotta pay for street strapping, which was done, a little bit's been done so far, um, out of there, plus the, we did this Twelfth Street, which is done, looks great. And, um, the Chestnut and Str- Chestnut, yeah, they gotta do the front. They got, there's, they're, I don't know how they're figuring this out, cause they show up and stripe, and then the next day they're gone and half of them done, but whatever, but it's in progress, so. I don't know anything, I don't know anything, I know that Rick was approached- I, I don't know. I don't know anything, I know we were approached last year about the similar building. For whatever reason, I'm not sure if COVID hit and the company backed out or whoever. And then Rick was just, um, called three or four weeks ago, he doesn't know anything. Oh, yeah. They'll have to go under the, they'll have to go under the road to get water, sewer, everything. I couldn't tell you Ralph, tell my hand right behind you. I have not, no, cause we, Rick just got a call about it, and basically they're in their feasibility studies. Um, they wanted to do, they wanted to know about flow rates and so on, and sewage and all that kinda stuff. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't reached out there. To that, I mean, we would service them, I just, I just, no, we have water and sewer both out there. But I, I would assume that they're gonna have to go through the road or under the road to get to wherever the line is, at least, I mean, you're gonna have paths, so you're gonna be in the middle of the road, more likely. I mean, I haven't, it's, it's- No, I just put a little note here, I'll call him, I just didn't reach out to him, I di- you know, didn't- Yeah, it's been this time last year or so when they called, they were wanting same flow test rates, all that kinda stuff. I can, but I can't right now. I don't, I don't know enough about this facility to, to tell you anything. I'll make a call to Eric, we'll wait on those bids to come in and see where we're at, and we'll kinda follow up with these guys to see. Yeah, and we'll, and we'll kinda follow up with, with whoever Rick's been talking to and see how that materializes. We're not gonna know anything right away on those guys, you know, they're just doing their feasibility study, so. I do know there's approximately two to three hundred loads of babbage from somewhere on this piece of property that's gonna have to come out. Is what Rick told me, so. Babbage from somewhere, road asphalt, concrete, not ours. Stuff from other job sites, I would assume, since Mercy or Jefferson owns it, it was probably, as they've expanded over the years, stuff was taken there, so. Uh, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know, I just know, it's, Rick, according to Rick, that, that all those are gonna have to be taken out, so, you know, the- Uh, last thing, business license changes. The, the question comes back again of background checks. We get constantly, and Shelley can tell you more than I can, questions, comments, threats, on the background check. We're the only city around that requires a background check for a business license. Typically, we don't really have any issues, if we get one back and it's a felony, the mayor likes to know and reads over it and may call him or may not. Yeah, so the, the biggest problem gets to be is, like, when you have a company, a large company, uh, that you're requiring a business license check for, who do you run, who, who do you want the background check ran on? Because they have twenty workers here, who are you gonna, who are you gonna run it on? The business owner, well, what good does that do, because you have two felons in the twenty, I don't know, I'm just saying. But, you know, I have, I had a, a conversation with a, a large contractor that did some work at the park the other day, and he said, who do you want me to run this background check on? I wasn't on site, the owner wasn't on site. I got four in there, I got twenty other workers there, who do, who, no, they do not. No, this is just, this is, yeah. We, we can no longer use our CAD system and our, our police force to do background checks. Now, they'll go in and when we're doing liquor licenses or something like that, they'll, they'll, you guys see it, they'll report, there was no instances of crystal tabbing or whatever, so, um, no, but we, we get a lot of, or they do, I don't so much. Yeah, once you go on, but then it's usually a two or three process, they come in, two or three step process, they come in without it, and they're like, no, just go to Missouri Heights, not Finger Princess, and then, then they huff and puff and, huff and puff and cuss and leave, and then they come back. Well, and it, I mean, this would go for contractors too. The, the one thing about contractors is, is what we've always used it as, is if we have a big hailstorm, and next thing you know, we've got contractors from out of state, it kinda is just an extra level of protection against the, for the homeowner, but a little bit of the due diligence or should be on the homeowner to who, who am I hiring? It kinda is just an extra level of protection against the, for the homeowner, but a, a little bit of the due diligence should be on the homeowner to who, who am I hiring? This guy's showing up with California license plates or whatever. So, yeah, it's happened here a time or two, but it, it is a, a huge problem that we face every, because we're going through business licenses this time of year, and it's, it creates a headache for these guys. And we are the only community around that does it, that requires the, the background check. No, that, that's, well, that statue, that's kinda something that, that, yeah, that- Well, the work, the workers' comp, compensation issue is, you know. On the workers' compensation? I don't know. I don't, I don't follow the liquor licenses. Yeah, I would think so. Right. Well, the, the workers' compensation, the workers' compensation that I was, uh, trying to refer to was our own internal policy, which is, is been an issue more times than not on projects that we do. And Mr. Osher can tell you about what happened at the park board, which we'll all, we're gonna have a conversation about it sometime, uh, in the, in the future, as soon as I, the mayor and I get that line down. But we do have, you know, instances where, you know, we had a bid on the back parking lot here, just to crack seal, uh, fill the cracks with, with tar. And the thing, the job was eight, nine hundred bucks, but they don't have workers' compensation insurance. So, the next closest bid, obviously, is gonna probably be double or triple that. Um, that's just one example. One example is painting, touching up this room when we did all this new speaker stuff. You know, for me to get a union contractor in here with workers' compensation, uh, versus a local guy who's just comes in with a ladder and kinda fixes it himself, that, there's a lot of issues. Now, you can get hurt doing either one of those things. Uh, but we, we, we had a situation at the park that kinda got past the goalie and ruffled some feathers, and, but that's our policy, and that's what we gotta do, because at the end of the day, when we get our work comp audit, anybody that works for us, that doesn't have work comp, we get caught in the audit, we gotta per- pay a percentage of, of the total cost of the project. So, I'm trying to figure out a balance between what's gonna cost me double or triple for a little project like touching up paint, painting this conference room or council room versus taking down a tree. Obviously, I think you need to have it if you're gonna be cutting a tree, using a power tool, a big piece of equipment. But it's, you know, I'm trying to figure out a way to be consistent. When I put this out on my list serve, I got several back that had waivers of liability. Talked to Lynn, uh, a customer about it, and she's like, that's about as good as the, whatever you want, whatever, it's not, it's not worth the paper it's written on, but. No, that's, that's- Right, right. Right, which is what I've tried to explain. Right, to, to a few individuals, yeah, it was just this little bitty job, but say the company that was hired to do the tar back there, young guy pulls it out, the hot tar down his leg, cause, you know, he turned into a million dollar claim that was, so I'm just trying to find a, a, or it could be a felony, right? So, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out a balance of how we as a city can still get projects done, you know, without waiting on a bigger corporation out of, you know, because we require it. So, I can't say that, you know, we're not doing what I'm requiring other. I don't remember. Um. When I had that down, I think it was two hundred bucks. They come in, the, the spit, there used to be speak, three or four speakers up here, and so they were all removed. He touched those up, painted, cleaned it up, you know. Two days, two hours each day, two hundred bucks, something like that. Versus trying to, to get a contractor that had work, you know, workers' compensation and so on and so forth. You know, I mean, I, obviously, the scale of the project will determine what I'm comfortable waiving and what I'm not. You know, because ultimately, it falls back on us, but it, it makes it hard to get some stuff done sometimes. Right, yeah. Right, which, which, you know, it's, it's kinda been what I've done in the past. Not very often, but that was, that was the case I could think of, including painting the entire city hall. The local contractor, one guy, two guys, um, didn't have to have it by work comp rules, but by our work comp carrier, he had to have it because he didn't work for us. So, it's- Yeah. No. And then we don't get insurance the next year, so. Well, I mean, I'll just continue to kinda handle it on a, if you can get me the, whatever you're talking about, the cost to kinda figure. I mean, obviously, I wouldn't do anything for some big project, but these little things, you know, it's, which, it's- Right, right, yeah, it just, it just created a bigger deal than it was probably worth at, in, in, at the park department. Uh, but we'll get it straightened out and we'll go from there. Well, we will make that effective next, next year, um, 'cause we- You can do away with it then, but as far as, I'm not, you know, all that stuff's starting to come in now, so there's, we'll- Okay, so new businesses, we won't require it, so we'll draft a policy on that. Um, that's all I had. That's a lot. You know, it's eight thirty. I should've had dinner or something, but I didn't. Um, does anybody have anything for me? Okay, you wanna email me or talk to me after this, or? Okay. You never answer the pictures I sent ya. The pictures I sent you about, you got during the meeting and stuff. That guy on Miller Drive right there? Hey, Tom, adjourn the meeting, adjourn the meeting. I sent you, uh, pictures. No, it looked like somebody had shoveled up. No, I sent Matt up there. Matt sent me a picture, then I went and looked up there. Well, it looked like he had put shovel full of-